Addressing the board. When addressing the board state, your full name, both person and on Zoom, it is suggested that you enter your full name as your ID on Zoom. Uh, minutes, uh, approval of minutes from June five, twenty twenty three.
I'll move them.
Second.
All in favor? And I abstain. Appointments, recognitions, and resignations, annual board and committee appointments.
I'll move them, but I have a question.
Second.
Uh, my question is there, there are a lot of names missing on there.
That's because they're not all up for renewal this year.
I know I ask that every year, but thank you.
And I think that we voted me to be the exececia member of the broadband committee.
No doubt.
Need further discussion? All in favor? Confirm reappointment Katrina Carter to the Mount Desert Housing Authority Board of Commissioners for a five-year term to begin May one, twenty twenty three.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Confirm reappointment of Wanda Fernal to the Mount Desert Housing Authority Board of Commissioners for a five-year term beginning May one, twenty twenty three.
Confirmation.
Second.
All in favor? Consider appointment of Zach DeRosa, a seasonal employee at the Northeast Harbor Marina Launch Captain, an hourly rate of twenty dollars per hour.
Move appointment.
Second.
All in favor? Consider appointment of Zach Mitchell as Patrick Truck Driver for the Waste Management Division of the Public Works Department. Effective on January four, July seventeen, twenty twenty three, at a probationary hourly rate of twenty-two dollars and seventy-two cents per hour.
Move appointment.
Second.
All in favor? Resignation of John March from the zoning board of appeals effective June six, twenty twenty three.
Move acceptance with, um, thanks. Second.
Second, yeah, I agree with that, too. That's unfortunate. I'm all there. Resignation of Gloria Conji from the planning room.
Move acceptance.
Second.
All in favor?
Can I put in a plug that I was at a planning board meeting last week and they really need people, both members and alternates?
Just gonna say they have, they're down one regular member and two alternate.
Consent agenda, resident comment for trash pickup in Paul Quarry. Memorandum from Public Works Director Brian Henkel and Waste Water Superintendent Ed Montague regarding Phil Patrick Coe water quality. Select board meeting scheduled twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Sound of Mount Desert holiday schedule twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. May word has twenty twenty-three agreement currently July one, twenty twenty-three to June thirty, twenty twenty-four. Ticket and sales twenty twenty-three agreements. Allen Associates asked to charter his deal in bunker, term July one, twenty twenty-three to June thirty, twenty twenty-four. Hancock County Commissioner's Special Meeting Minutes from May sixteen, twenty twenty-three. MRC partnership update for innovative resource recovery, June two, twenty twenty-three. MRC virtual town hall meeting invitation, June twenty-one, twenty twenty-three at eleven A.M. Anov Scott Energy Recovery Company foreclosure memo from MRC, June by twenty twenty-three.
Move acceptance of the consent agenda.
Second that.
Yeah, I just wanna, this Jeff, uh, would, I wanted to point out, I mean, before we pass the, the town of Mount Desert holidays, there's a couple of things on there that I didn't check every date, but I know that June nineteenth is a Wednesday. And that's on there as Monday, and I don't know that it's, I don't know if it's something that needs to be changed here, but the official name of Monday, October fourteenth is Indigenous Peoples' Day, not Native American Day. So I just, before we publish that, it would be good, I think, to make sure that those dates are accurate with their days and, and that we're properly naming the, the holidays.
Okay. Anything else?
So the Juneteenth will be on the Wednesday.
It is on Wednesday, and according to the, yes, it's on Wednesday, and that's the day it'll be recognized, um, cause it's like Veterans Day, it's on the date. And the other one is just, I don't know that, uh, I just know that that's how it's called.
All right, Rick.
That was it.
All right. Yeah, anything else? Okay, all. Select board reports, any reports?
Oh, I, I have something I've got a re- I have actually two things. I got a request from, um, a business person on Main Street who asked if we could put a bike rack at the end of Main Street there. I think there are two up at that end. But the far end, maybe in the- Yeah. Because evidently people are just leaving their bikes up against the building or against her building. And, um, she would prefer if there was someplace for them to put them. I don't know if that's possible. Yeah, we used to have one in the tri- it wasn't in the tri-
It was near the-
Or way it was on the neighborhood.
It was on the neighborhood house.
Yeah. Thank you. The other thing is, um, we have a meeting scheduled for July third. I think that's our next meeting, and it's gonna be an awkward date for a lot of people since, uh, we have the weekend, then we have the meeting, and then we have July fourth, and, um, uh, unless there's something pressing, I would suggest that we either postpone it or, um, eliminate it.
Yeah, you don't have to have two meetings.
Right.
You have to have at least one, so you would have the choice of either moving it or just eliminating it and just having that one meeting in July.
I, I would like to eliminate it.
Yeah, I can, I, yeah, I cannot be there on the third.
It's probably from past history, Jeff, as you remember, and as all of you remember, that July, those tend to be pretty short meetings anyway, and there's probably nothing so pressing that we can't.
And we can always convene if we need to.
Yeah.
Should we vote it?
Do I have a motion?
Uh, a move that we eliminate the July third board of sliding meeting unless something pressing comes up.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. Any more reports?
I, yeah, this is Jeff again. I, I wanna, um, just report that there's, in my neighborhood in Somerville, that there is a continued pressure sort of to, uh, figure out something about the short-term rentals, and I wanna, I just wanna put a plug in there that we, I know that what, what we hope to accomplish before the town meeting didn't take place, um, because it wasn't ready, but we need to get on more of that. We have a, a home that's never lived, had more than three people live in it that's now being listed, um, as having upwards of fifteen people. Happens to be the house next door to me. Um, it's right on the main drag in Somerville, and I just don't know what, you know, as far as safety and water and sewer and all the other things, let alone the other concerns that we have about, about housing, um, I just wanna put in a plug that we need to continue to, to get something together.
I agree with you.
Yeah, I agree.
That's back in the Luso Committee's lab.
I'm on that.
Yeah, I know you are.
Can I make a quick comment?
That's why I'm looking at you.
I'm Alan Kimberly, and a, a lot of the rental agreements, the, uh, the person who owns the home has, it's very possible he has put a limit on the number of people in there, and that person who has rented it has exceeded that limit. That happened to my, uh, uh, neighbor, Bob Moran in North Harbor many times. Is he rented it out for either four or six people? I think he never went, he had a two-bedroom house.
Oh, we have, we, this, this one has been listed. There's three units in the building, and two of them are for two, and one of them sleeps eleven. And, uh, and, and that's, that's what I know, because I've looked at it on Verbo, and it's just shocking to me, cause that's, that's, I don't know how that, and they have no minimum, they have a two-night minimum. So I'm, I don't know. Uh, if that happens all around, we're, it's, it's a concern. And they, they work off, the, the water supply is a, is a, is a, uh, what's it called? A, a, a spring house. Which is, uh, neighbors are concerned is it's never supplied that kind of water, and this, who knows? There's lots of concerns, and I just wanna make sure that we're, we're trying to cover them all and, and, uh, that's all.
Well, anything else? Okay, unfinished business, Marina landscape plan discussion.
You didn't get anything into the packet. If anyone wants to come up and take a look, we've got the latest plan. Be available to you, you need to refresh.
I would like to make a comment. Um, when this, when this was originally, um, came up, it was in response to, I believe, a comment I made, um, in response to an increasing number of people who wanted to place benches, trees, et cetera, around the town, um, in honor of someone they loved, which is a lovely sentiment. But we had no plan whatsoever in the town for placing these things, so, um, I spoke with my, uh, friend Ellie at the library, who I knew was on the garden committee, and I said, you know, I'm, we're not landscape architects, but could, could the garden committee maybe come up with some ideas about where benches? Well, they came up with what is a very elaborate plan, far exceeding what I had in mind, um, personally, but I mean, it's lovely. Uh, the harbor committee has some major concerns with it, I know, and I'd like to hear from them about specifically what they are. In my mind, it may be a bit more than we need, um, quite a bit more than we need. But I, I still feel it's important for us to have some, some kind of plan in our mind for when people come here and they say, you know, my dog, my child, my friend, whatever, you know, I wouldn't want to put something in their memory in the town. They love this town. Instead of having them say, this is where I want it, it would be nice if we could say, here, we have this bench, or we can put a bench here with the name on it, or we could plant a tree here. So I think it's important we have some kind of a plan. It doesn't, in my mind, it doesn't need to be this fancy or take up this much space, frankly, because I think we, one of the concerns, as I understand it from the harbor committee, is we want a big open space down there for community events, and I agree with that.
Did, did you specifically say you wanted it at the harbor, or could it be anywhere in town?
I, what I would like to see is a a townwide plan, really, because not all requests are for Northeast Harbor, and we have a big town with a lot of lovely spots where it might be appropriate to plant a tree or put a bench, um. But I think without some vision, townwide vision, we're gonna wind up with a mishmash, and I don't think any of us want that.
Agreed.
Yeah.
So I, I heard that when you-
Yes.
For, and so I have been working through the process, figuring out, um, I, I don't have anything prepared for you as of yet, but I do anticipate bringing back something.
So you're, you're the man.
Yeah, we have, we have multiple public spaces.
Yes, we do.
Or Seal Harbor, or Northeast Harbor, there's, there's a variety of places. Panzan, Panzan was another one where this conversation came up, and so standardizing it, yes, but probably not exactly the same thing at each of those.
No, of course not.
But at least having something that the town has as a, 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 a process of procedure and some standards for various places.
I think that would be wonderful. Um, we, we went through a thing years ago. I can't remember, Rick, if you were on the board then, in Seal Harbor, where somebody wanted to put, put a bunch of trees in the-
Oh, yeah.
Summit, do you remember that?
I do.
And, and it was a big commotion, and it, but, but if we had a plan, we could say, well, you know, that sounds lovely, but here's where we'd want it, not here. Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, but it's on my list still, and I'm working through it. I, that's gonna be, I'm anticipating that that's gonna be a, a a revision that we'll do, we'll do at town meeting-
Yeah.
-next year, so that's sort of my-
And, and you know, this, uh, as I said, I feel this is more than we need in the harbor, but there may be elements here that would be helpful for that place, but as you said, it's a big town. We got a lot of space where it would be appropriate to do something.
Remember Brian did a good job working with the lady that had to wait so long?
Yes.
Met, and they walked through, who came up with a plan, which I think was very appropriate for our area, so that's, that's kind of what, uh, what he's trying to do now, which I think will be very useful. Mr. Dan?
Yeah, uh, actually, uh, Rick had a stand-up. Rick?
I have, I have a question, I guess, or comment. Is John? Is John?
John Rick.
John Rick, Rick. Oh, this Rick, yeah. Sorry, Rick. I, I'm gonna speak on behalf of the harbor committee. Uh, over the course of several months, we have, uh, given extensive review to the plans. And, uh, we voiced our opinion, um, quite some time ago, uh, the first time. Uh, then we found that they skipped the harbor committee and came directly to the selectmen. Uh, when we, uh, heard about it, we get the plan from the select board and, uh, reviewed it again extensively. And, uh, our group is well-versed about the marina and the area down there. And because of many factors, which we've written down here, and I'll get support, I know, uh, we rejected the whole plan at this time, because we felt that the green space was very important for the town, uh, just emphasized at Memorial Weekend. And when we start planning things, there are a whole list of factors that are gonna interrupt that space and the use of the green. So, um, again, the harbor committee, with, with all due respect, uh, rejected the plan completely. And we would like to, uh, perhaps, uh, if somebody has something that they want to put down there, we could take it on a one-by-one basis. But, uh, right now, uh, it's a unanimous agreement with the harbor committee that we are not in favor of the plan as presented.
Okay. So.
I think this Rick.
Yeah, Rick, go ahead.
This Rick?
Yeah.
And I'd like to, John Loinon?
Yeah, is he with us tonight?
Yep, it's right there.
Yes, I'm here.
I wanna query your memory, John, if it's the same as mine, going back to two thousand sixteen, when the garden club, garden committee, whatever they were called at the time, began a beautification project along the front of the, um, Harbor Masters Building. They wanted to improve the, the plants out front, make the front of that building look nice, and they talked about irrigation in there, and and then it just seemed to fizzle out with a couple of shrubs by that, that big generator. And that was pretty much the end of it until this came out to do the entire green.
Yeah, they, they did do some stuff out front, Rick, and, uh, they also did a lot out back. It also included all of the brickwork that is between, uh, my office and the visitor's center, uh. But that was the initial plan, and they did complete everything that was proposed in that, uh, piece, and then, uh, Williams Irrigation donated the, uh, the irrigation for that section. And this is the, uh, other than a couple of trees and a bench or two that have been placed, that is all that has happened up until now.
Still incorrect, then, in my assumption that what we have before us today, this plan is not a continuation of what we were presented back in two thousand sixteen?
No, this is an entirely brand-new idea.
Thanks. Thank you, John.
Yes.
Um, I just, I feel like it's two different things. Like, I think what you're working on is very important, and we need to have something in place, but I feel like this is way overkill, and the green space, like you said, Memorial Day, I mean, you couldn't have done it without, with, with something, you just couldn't do something, you, people and dogs and kids and tramples, and so I thank you, guys. I mean, you have looked at it a lot, but I feel like we're really thinking about two different, very different things.
I think that's, yeah, what I said.
Yeah.
Yeah, Howie.
This is Howie, you know. Um, I just wanna say that, you know, as our conversations went on, and I know, you know, we are all unanimous, that plan is not what we're running for, but in our conversations, um, and you could go and listen to them, but, uh, the, the trees along, like, like you said, Mark, you know, having a place for some trees for people that don't, you know, memorialize their, their folks with, that was something we weren't so much opposed to, you know, just a few trees here or there, you know, that kind of a thing, but like, we all agree, you know, or we're all saying at least, that that plan is, is way more than, I think, what anyone expected.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Howie. I think there are things like, I wouldn't wanna remove that maple tree.
No.
Um, I think that if we put a bunch of plantings in, we really don't know what it's gonna look like when they start to fill in. Um, and I think a little bit at a time is probably a good idea, but to get back to you, Rick, um, and I, and I don't mean to be unkind about this, cause I appreciate what the harbor committee does, believe me. Um, it was totally appropriate for them to come to the select board first with that, because that's, that's our purview down there, okay? Um, your charter says you have authority from the bulkhead down. Right?
Oh, uh, so we, we include you because we want your input, uh, and we want your input constructively.
And that's what we're looking for.
Oh, we agree.
Okay.
But we do also are, uh, given other obligations that don't necessarily always work from the bulkhead down, which we're all. I personally would recommend that if you have individuals that want to have a memorial tree or a service or something like that, that you take it up on a one-by-one basis. And, uh, that would be my ins- uh, impact, uh, but I wouldn't be locked into a set plan, uh, as elaborate as this one was, and, uh-
I think there's someplace in between, Rick. Um, the, the thing is, we have been doing our one-by-one basis for years, and we've gotten into some tricky situations where people have come with something that really isn't quite right, but they're, you know, we, we, they, they're obviously, they're really, it's important to them, and we hate to turn them down, and, you know, they feel bad, we feel bad, and we thought, oh, go ahead, but then it's, there we're looking at it. You know, you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, we need a menu of options, and not necessarily, not necessarily a prescribed plan, like the next, the next memorial needs to be the third oak tree down, but we need a, a set of options that doesn't leave it wide open to whatever people want, and also doesn't put us in a position of having to say no to somebody all of a sudden, and they don't understand why when somebody else was able to do that last year.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And, and we may not wanna crowd it up with a bunch of plantings and have no room for memorial trees.
Absolutely.
Right, so.
Right. I think, it sounds like we're all pretty much in agreement on this.
I'd like to just add a couple points. Like, I'm Jim Black, I'm on the table today, and I've been on it a long time, uh, so I've got a few things, but so, all of the neighbors on this side of the marina, probably, I would think, I would assume that they're attached on the view that they have across the marina. So if the town starts planting trees and takes away that view, what do you say to that? But anyway, you don't have to, I mean, push it, but just think of that, and I thought of that.
It would be a view reason. It would be a view easement codified on the town property, which I don't think anyone knows.
But I would assume all those people are getting attached to that.
If they got a view, cool.
Yeah.
So many of us get attached to our views, which are then eliminated. I speak from experience.
And I go back to that, you know, from the bulkhead down, it's interesting, I've been there a long time, and that's what we used to focus on, really, but then a lot of other issues came along. I think one of the first ones was people buying in the park and lots. And we have a committee, you know, we've addressed that. If we, if we don't address it, who's going to address it? And then I think we moved on to food trucks. And we have a big issue now with parking. If we stayed on the bulkhead down, we would have eliminated what, under the leadership of Howie here, what we've accomplished in the last two years, dealing with the parking down there, and I can tell you, I'm on his committee, and I admire what he's done, supplying with information, and he can present you, and he's going to present you with some information. But that's on the bulkhead up, and let me tell you, we spent a lot of time dealing with the parking issue for the last two years, so when we get to Howie's presentation, when you get to it, just take that into consideration. We've always wanted to stay on the bulkhead, but we've kind of been forced into moving from the bulkhead in.
Well, I know, because we asked you to.
Right.
Right, and we need that, because we need your eyes down there, because I'm not down there much. I'm down there when I go out to the islands or something. That's it.
So when we're doing the bulkhead down, maybe we should be definitely recognized or authorized to, to deal with the bulkhead on this side. But anyway, we, you know, we did the renovations of the marina, and we're very proud of what we did, definitely, you know, you look at what, what happened in those renovations, it's really a huge improvement from what it was. And today, and so, and when, when we were doing that, part of our plan was the green area, everything from the bulkhead on this side, with the fact that people could come to the marina, not on a boat, and enjoy the area. That was part of our goal, and we've accomplished that. The functionality of that marina right now is terrific. It's excellent. It's good. You're starting on Memorial Day. So this garden plan obviously could handicap that a lot. Again, we've reviewed this extensively with our committee, eleven members, in way unanimous, that we don't wanna go there, where this plan is going. I agree. Where a marina, not a garden. I'm sure it would be beautiful, but where a marina, not a garden, and it's working good. And what they've done so far is great, around the Harbor Masters Building, it's all good. But we have, uh, as John has informed us, uh, maintenance annually with that is seven thousand plus. So if they put in a, if we put in a big plan down there, what's our maintenance fee gonna be annually? We should consider that.
You pay for the maintenance for that entire greenspan?
What's part of my budget, I believe? You'll have to consult with John.
The marina. The marina, I'm not sure.
Oh, that's interesting.
It's expen- this is Donna on, uh, Zoom. Yeah, it's-
All right, Jim?
I think you'll find that everything that happens down there is made out of the, uh, harbor budget. For the marina, the garbage.
Totally. Save up the blocks.
Yeah, maybe, maybe we should look at a rewrite of the charter.
Well, we, we make-
Um, yeah, I'm saying is that we ought to have the committee have officially in writing purview where their budget money goes. Their committee charter-
I understand.
-is very clear, and I'm saying that maybe we should think about revising.
Expanding, right? I, I mean, they support each other, right? I mean, the space where people park, you know, I mean, that, you know, and use that marina, they support each other, and that's, you, you can't have one without the other at this point.
Yeah, but, well, I think basically, we spent quite a bit of time in Apple about two years ago on relaying the harbor charter, which is there, and I think it's working. You, you guys have any problem with the-
We wrote that, we wrote that ordinance, uh, morings and stuff like that, I don't-
No, we, we worked with people, too. Rick, what year was that when we, when we wrote, when you wrote that?
Two thousand seventeen.
Oh, seventeen, okay, boy, that-
Okay, boy, that, I thought it was close, and that, that was six years ago, so we did a major rewrite to try to address a lot of the issues. As far as I can tell, it's working fine there, but I don't administer it off of it every day, I have it in my reference.
I will bring up one other thing, it's gonna be a huge, it is becoming a huge, huge problem, and that's supporting. The Cranbury Isle parking situation on a daily basis. Really, uh, it's not just a summer problem, it's a winter problem. And uh, it's it's growing annually, uh, and it's, I think it's. So, if you want us to continue on, we're happy to. Even if we don't rewrite the charter immediately. But uh, we are, we do feel responsible for the area, and I'm pretty sure our budget covers almost every expense down there.
Well, it should, yeah, it is an enterprise.
We're we're pleased with that, and right now, we're, uh, it's, because our money comes from moorings and uh dock rental. And we stay in the middle, uh, averaging up up and down the coast, we're not overcharging or undercharging. So, uh, we have a very, very nice Marina, probably for a small Marina, the best on the Atlantic Coast. And uh, we're all proud of it, and we'd like to keep it that way.
No, it is a jewel, yeah.
Good.
Story has her hand up.
Story.
Story, let's feel, um, member of the Harvard Committee. I'm wondering, taking it a step further, if there's a way of memorializing someone because. The town may need a piece of firefighting equipment, which isn't all that glamorous. But if someone can make a donation in their loved one's name. Something that might be more helpful, and, you know, or a plaque, a series of plaques. And it just reminded me, I think that's Mr. Ober's table right there, and a plaque in front of you. And, you know, how many trees, five trees would max out? So, five trees isn't gonna go very far.
That's a really good idea, how about a packer truck?
You know, but just. They can choose, do you want your donation for so and so to go for fire equipment, or whatever the town might need, and you'll get a little.
And an acknowledgement, I think that's a great idea. Doesn't have to be trees and benches all the time.
It doesn't have to be trees, and I know Mr. Ober's name, I didn't know him, but I know. That's the name on that table, and it just reminded me of that.
Lots of towns have the the five hundred dollar bricks, you know, that they put in an area. And that's something that can be done, I don't know if, you know, we could get with the garden club and, you know. Do, you know, ten percent of what they have on that plan. You know, it's like our our whole thing is, if the way is written, you know, it should weigh way, way too much.
I think we all agree on that, Alan, and I think that Brian is gonna be um, looking at that, yeah.
Well, one good thing, Alan, too, on that, is when we presented that plan, that was meant to be, you could segmentize. In other words, you could do cafeteria, and say, well, I like this, and I don't like that, and so, there may very well be some of the. The plantings and things on there that you think are wonderful, even though the overall scheme doesn't fit in with the. The venue, but uh, it it is designed to kind of pick and choose, you can take little parts of it, and they they don't necessarily, all the pieces. Of the puzzle have to be there, so not a bad idea.
And there are currently six, seven, eight, maybe, palm trees down there?
Yeah, there's some of them, uh, probably, I think we need to be some, doing some planning, because there's not a lot of shade there. In the summers, you know, if you lost that one tree by those picnic tables, that would be quite a loss. And it's a brother or sister tree a number of years ago, blew down in the windstorm, and those. Those sugarmales can be somewhat uh, uh, vulnerable. To wind and ice and things like that, so we ought to probably be ready in that case that tree goes down, to be. Acting fairly quickly to put somebody in some consequence back there for the shade.
Another area that's been been a little bit, um, I think Tony did a few things to that little tiny little park that's right here. Where the firehouse was maybe gonna go at one point, you know, right, you know what I mean, right on the corner there.
The grassy knoll.
The grassy knoll, you said the, the big bird with the naked lady in her mouth that claws at one time, I can't remember.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Saying they probably need to be removed.
I know, but that's, it's an area, if somebody wanted to do, that could use some new trees, in what I'm saying, and it's, it's it's a nice little. Spot, actually, it's lovely in the summer.
I remember when that thunderhawk was put in there, I was on the board, I got a few comments on that.
Was metal, wasn't it metal?
Yeah, it it was, it had metal and it was wood, and it was, eventually it fell apart.
Yeah. I think it had help falling apart.
I still got a picture that's.
It was a little scary.
It was interesting.
One that's completely dead, right, as you take that first turn into the tennis courts, it probably. It'll be taken down before it falls on somebody. And the other one is the uh, one up the hill, where someone's been trying to get rid of for a while, that you probably have to move the. Planting a little bit to get it out of the poison soil, but uh. And that one, that's gonna be neat and be done pretty soon, yeah, and just, totally off subject. We, I was doing the V I S today, we're opening the view up again to the harbor. And the railing along the side of the sidewalk there is. You gotta do something, it's all rotten, it's falling down, there's gonna be, it's like picking out.
Going up out of town?
Yeah, I mean, I I hadn't noticed it, but it is. Where is it? On the side, just before I had a state uh project. That was a stain, put that in, yeah, I don't know, this is probably why we did a stain, the town could encourage a stain. Yeah, it's dangerous now, it's a paper.
The road coming into town.
Pressure treated lumber or something, but it's all right. Just not stopping a car, I can tell you that.
Okay, so how do we deal with that, is that a Brian thing?
Everything's a Brian thing, it turns out.
Also, Brian, I want to thank you for repairing the stairs, going up.
Oh, great. That's scared to go on.
There's a nice wood farm, but kids are growing up all around there, maybe you could landscape that.
That's what I was saying, yeah.
Use some of these plantings and stuff there.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Have you noticed it recently?
Yeah, I, well, I spent, I was down down there probably four or five months ago, I walked up around there, it's gonna be pretty gnarly for sure.
A lot of new stuff is growing this spring.
Well, maybe that might be a project. Maybe you go take this, the grassy knolls.
Back to them. At least a picnic there with my kids.
Chairman.
Yeah.
I'd move the question. Well, I mean, we've, we've had a very healthy discussion, and we've discussed a lot of different things, and we're now moving into an area of identifying where repairs need to be made on. Many other things that go beyond just this, this plan that we were discussing, so I move the question. It requires a second.
Do we?
What is, what is the question you're moving?
The discussion of the Marina beautification plan, unless you want to continue discussing it, I move the question.
You move the discussion end.
That's what it means, yes.
No action.
Good, no action, all right. You know, in favor?
Yeah, thanks to the Harvard Committee for your very helpful suggestions. But good.
Yeah. New business, consider a ten dollar processing fee for the recording of family and private burial grounds.
The suggested ten dollar fee.
I'd second that.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Consider the policy of limiting public notary acts to town business.
I would move that that's a reasonable thing to limit.
I would second that.
Katrina?
I have a question, do we cha- do, have we charged for those, no? Where can they go if they don't go, do they can go to the bank, I know that.
There's over a hundred and twenty notaries on the island.
I know, but in town, they could go, could go to the bank, I think Noel's company has somebody.
A lot of the real estate agents have somebody, the banks have people.
Katrina, do you?
What I would like to see this day, rather than eliminating the town businesses, limiting it to taxpayers. Because we have many taxpayers that own big parcels of land in this community that pay a majority of our taxes. That may not have a local bank account, that want to come into the town office and get something notarized, and that's. What we should be doing, we should be serving our tax base. So if it's only town business, that really limits it, but if it's somebody who is here seasonally. And needs to get something notarized, we should really try to make those people feel as welcome as possible. By helping them get their business taken care of, so they can be here and spend their money and enjoy being here.
Perhaps we could, we could assemble a list of the people that are willing to do, I had a friend that can't leave his home and. Needed to have something notarized, and and we had somebody that came out to his house, and it was ten dollars, and that, so. If we can find people locally that are willing to do that, we could certainly make that list available.
The list is available on the Secretary of State's website, it's really easy to just go right on there and.
By zip code, basically.
I just think that we need to serve our taxpayers, and this is a service.
I I kind of agree, but I also feel like. The thought about, like, just to notarize something, how do we know? That that is, there's so much fraud everywhere now, and if we notarize something. And and, I mean, Claire, I hadn't even really thought about that part of being a notary or notarizing something is, just because. They bring it to you, doesn't mean that it's legal paperwork, and I think.
It's, as I understand it, I could be wrong, I used to be a notary, but it is, I remember it. When you're notarizing something, you're not certifying that it's true, you're just certifying that you saw them sign it, is that right?
Well, that's part of it, but there is a lot of fraud, there's a lot of false IDs out there, and we are not document experts. They may be presenting incomplete information, um, or not even be the person that they're pretending to be. Um, it's, I think it's a a huge liability that I really personally, I don't want to take on. And I don't think the town should be taking it on.
But is that the, I thought the primary, well, not, maybe not the primary, but another part of the argument of limiting it was just because of the amount of. Amount of, you you guys have enough to do already, and and if there's no limit. To how many people can come in and take up time that's not town business, that's an issue.
That is an issue.
I, I mean, I, I think that's a good enough issue, without the, without the argument that that we would be party to fraud.
But if these people that are coming in and asking to have something notarized. Are paying the town employees' salaries by paying taxes, how do you deny them that service?
Because, because it's not a service that they're paying for, they're paying for the service of the town people to operate the town.
Then then charge them a fee, you pay to register your vehicle, you can come in here and pay your taxes, you can come in here and register your dog.
Can you, you're allowed to charge for a notary?
We are, um.
I would think it would be really, I mean, I'm a notary, and I'm allowed to charge, but that's a a fee. That I could set depending on what the service was, and I think that would be really hard for the town to navigate. Cause some things take longer, some things are five minutes, and some things might be thirty five minutes.
Right, and you, you know, and and back to what we were saying is, you know, when you get, especially in the summer, you get people, but these. Are year round, we do over, well over a hundred non-town notary acts per year. And we're becoming increasingly uncomfortable with things that are being presented to us.
And I know as a notary too, sometimes if you don't, I mean, yes, just the fact that they're signing it is one thing, but you. There's really a lot more to it than just certifying that they signed it, it's making sure that. You know, the terminology, and if you're not familiar with whatever that piece of paper may be. Or at least a little bit familiar, I can see your, but I see your point too, I mean, I think it's just, it.
I can register my dog, I can register my boat, and I can register my car. But those are clerk, those are clerk duties mandated by the state.
You have to register your dog, you have to register your car.
Yeah, and it's all part of your job description.
Uh, that's right.
I I I kind of, I'm kind of on the fence here, because I I do agree with Katrina's point, taxpayers. People who live here all year or part of the year, um, it's kind of a, it's a nice service to provide. To the people who live here, um. Would it be, but I understand your concerns about um, getting something that you're you're unfamiliar with and questionable.
I mean, I can say no.
Can you just say, I'm sorry, I'm not comfortable with this?
I don't know that we feel comfortable picking and choosing, which is why we're trying to get a policy. And I would be happy to print the current list from the Secretary of State's office, which could change daily, but. Or give them, you know, the contact, or how to go find it, but.
Yeah, I mean, we could provide a list of other people in the community, but. But they're right there, and they just right, get it done, yes.
But if you're on the list, and someone goes, oh, I'll just call Wendy, and you're, you know, at camp, you're not available. So they go down that, so here we get this taxpayer who owns this huge palatial estate on the water, that pays ten billion million dollars in taxes. Being frustrated because they can't get paperwork done so that they can stay here in this community for a longer length of time. Rather than going back to their office out of state to work.
I'd be surprised that they didn't have a notary on staff.
I would as well. I, the question, I think this, the 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 limit was moved, I don't know if anybody seconded it.
Yep, it was seconded. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor of considering the policy of limiting public notary acts to town business?
So, could, sorry, clarification, considering the policy, is that approving the policy as Claire is presenting?
Yeah, we're considering it, they want us to approve.
Yeah.
Consider and approve to be is two different things.
I move the approval of the limit. Then, if that's what it needs to be clarified, that's what we were voting on, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed?
Thank you. When we, though. Have a, something to hand to those people that says, please go to this website and.
Yeah, I'll print something.
Can I just add that that, that the attention of of Claire or any of the people working in the front office. Should absolutely not be contingent on the amount of their tax bill. If they are a resident of this town, or in in any way a taxpayer, they, every one of us should have equal footing in that line. So it doesn't matter whether they pay a million dollars or zero tax dollars.
I don't disagree with you, but what I'm trying to say to you is that we, who are here year round, probably have more ability to find somebody. Or know somebody who's a notary, or go to our local bank, where our bank will notarize for us. If you don't have a bank account in town, they won't notarize for you. So that's why those people that don't, live here year round, that don't bank.
So that's why those people that don't, live here year round, that don't bank here locally, are kind of up against it sometimes when it comes to getting something notarized.
Well, you know, I think we'll go with this, and if it becomes a problem, we'll deal with it.
Thank you, Claire, and I appreciate the whole stuff, that was, I I was, wow, like, that's a big responsibility, so.
Thank you.
All right, item C, consider transfer from reserve portfolio to general operating account, the amount of the audited interfund liability amount of five hundred thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-three cents for the fiscal year ended June thirty, twenty twenty-two.
Move the transfer.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you for the explanation on that, appreciate it.
Review bids received for a general obligation bond, a finance project approved at the twenty twenty-three annual town meeting, consistent with the requirements identified in Articles thirty-eight through forty-three and associated disclosures in a total principal amount of two thousand five hundred, two million five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Yeah, missed the zeros.
Just this here.
And this is what we asked you to bring back to us from our last meeting, correct?
Nothing's changed with the bond, uh, uh, rates, uh, it's just that we did not expand out this solicitation to include bands after we got the informal rates that didn't seem to, you know, make any sense to expand it out. Last year, when the five point, the nine, uh, the band rates and bond rate were substantially different. There was a, you know, I did a deep value calculation to determine, uh, you know, whether or not it makes sense or all that kind of stuff. And I was hoping that we would have a similar disparity this year. Um, but because of the inverted rate curve right now, the band rates and the bond rates are right now, and that unfortunate.
And your recommendation is? Because of the, the miniscule difference in the.
Correct, the the cost savings on the bands right now are not worth the risk rates continuing.
Right.
Makes sense.
You know, to have multiple, um, essentially bond issuances at that point. Uh, so multiple bond council, uh, reviews, which comes with legal fees. And we'd be trying to, uh, essentially refinance the ban probably through the bond bank. And some of these projects may be at varying stages of completeness at that point, which is really problematic if you're trying to go through the bond bank. Uh, if you can't borrow more, then you end up using. And so if we overestimated on particularly like this relocation, uh, project, uh, that can mean a lot of headaches down the road. And so it's better just a lot in the financing at this point, given the great environment, in my opinion.
I move acceptance of the good, and Steve from Barbara Bank and Trust at five point four eight percent for the amount of two million five hundred and fifty thousand going forward.
I think we're.
That's next, right?
Yeah, that's the next one, we're still on item D.
That is item D, isn't it?
D doesn't really require any actions.
We just reviewed the.
All right.
And then E and add do everything to actually initiate the bonds.
Okay.
So, I would second, since we reviewed the B I Ps.
All right.
Go on to E and. That's.
Approved resolutions authorizing the issuance of a general obligation bond of the town in a principal amount not to exceed two million five hundred and fifty thousand dollars at a fixed interest rate of five point four eight percent, for term of twenty years to Bar Harbor Bank and Trust. So, on favor?
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you, authorize execution of the bond documents with two million five hundred and fifty thousand dollar general obligation, uh, two million five hundred and fifty thousand dollar general obligation bond with Bar Harbor Bank and Trust, effective on or about June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Upstanding.
Consideration of waiving rental fee for use of the Seal Harbor Fire Station, community run by Friends of Katia on the date of June twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor? Consider amending the September nineteen, twenty twenty-two authorization to purchase new Ferrari ignited fire truck from Ferrari fire app, Ferrari fire apparatus at nine hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars to authorization to authorize the purchase of a new Ferrari Inferno fire truck from Ferrari fire apparatus. At nine thousand six, uh, nine hundred sixty-nine thousand forty-four dollars, using funds from the fire equipment reserve account number four zero four zero three zero zero dash two four four seven one, with a current unencumbered balance of approximately four hundred and eighty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety cents for the additional fifty-five thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars.
I'm of approval.
I'll second it. So, can we get a brief explanation of why the change, what, to the different kind of truck or whatever it is, just?
Yes, you have to be happy to, you, you're in the army?
Yes, oh, absolutely.
Okay, um, so, the engine that we ordered with the truck, uh, just about a year ago, was made by Cummins. Um, Cummins had planned to phase this engine out anyway, I think in about three or four years due to, uh, stricter emission controls, they're developing a power plant to meet the new emission standards. Uh, but they apparently oversold this engine, so when our truck is due to come up to be, uh, constructed about, probably about a year and a half. They don't think they're gonna have this engine available. But they made us a choice, or they gave us an offer of either paying more for a new engine, which is replacing the one that we ordered anyway. They feel, Cummins feels it's gonna be available by the time our truck hits the production line. Or we can wait and see if we can get the original engine, but there's some concern when our truck is ready to be constructed, it will be ready anyway, and we may have to wait even longer for the new engine, because we didn't order that.
Okay, thank you.
But basically, the the truck we ordered is, is taking about two more years than we anticipated, because it's fine. And I just don't wanna risk, push it out too much anymore, uh, if at all possible. And the reason the amount is, because the engine is bigger, we need to have it replace the cap, the bigger cap. Uh, we need to replace the front axle, we need to replace the radiator, or so on, so forth, because it's bigger.
Okay, thank you, that makes sense.
Okay. Little motion in a second?
Yeah.
All in favor? Any other business?
Not for me.
Treasurers warrants, okay, approval and signature. AP twenty-three eighty-one, AP twenty-four oh one, in the amount of one million four hundred and eighty-eight thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-three cents.
Good work.
Signature.
Second.
All in favor? Approval and signature, state fees and payroll benefits, AP twenty-three seventy-nine, AP twenty-three eighty, and PR twenty-three twenty-eight in the amount of two hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-two cents.
Second.
All in favor?
One extension.
Acknowledgements, school invoices, school payroll, PR number P one five, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand seven hundred and one dollars and nineteen cents.
All acknowledging.
Second.
Favor? I think I made a new journey.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?